All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled remote meeting of the Murphysboro Unit School District. And Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
United States
of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any additions or corrections?
No, sir.
I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 regular meeting minutes dated April the 21st, 2020, tri-county minutes dated April the 15th, 2020, tri-county bills for May 2020, applications and reports, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of the District 186 bills for May of 2019. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to accept the bills for May of 2019.
A motion to accept the bills.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
She got kicked out and, yeah. She got kicked out. She's asking to rejoin.
Get back on.
She texted me, but I don't see her in the list in the waiting room.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Hines.
Okay, Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion approved. Item number seven is communications. Mrs. Hines, do we have some, or Mr. Grody?
We have two.
Okay. Is Mrs. Ewaldy back?
Yes, yes, yes. I don't know what happened. I just got kicked out.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, dear Murphysboro Board of Education, 186 and Superintendent Mr. Chris Grody, it is with an extremely heavy heart that I submit my letter of resignation as Assistant Principal from the Murphysboro High School. Murphysboro School has been my home for the past nine years. I was hired within this district as a young educator and instantly knew this was the home for me. The amount of growth that I have made as an educator is due to all the wonderful teachers and administrators, and to that I want to say thank you. Thank you for helping me grow, for challenging me, and for pushing me to strive for more. After the adoption of my son Jake, the thought of moving back to my hometown became planted. I long for him to see his cousins, have sleepovers at his grandparents' house, and have childhood memories of growing up with family. That thought became more and more prevalent after having a second child. This has been the hardest adult decision I've had to make thus far, but ultimately, we want our children to be closer to family. With that, I have verbally accepted a position at New Lennox School District and will be board and will be board-approved on May 19th, 2020. Again, I want to thank you to everyone for giving me this wonderful opportunity to work in this district. It is by far the most welcoming, the most family-oriented, and has the best things going for it. I will truly miss everything this school and town has to offer. This isn't goodbye for me, but see you later. Go Devils, with a heavy heart, Erin Allison.
Wow.
Administration recommends we approve this pending her approval at her board meeting tonight. We would love to have her stay, but we understand her need to get back closer to family, and so the recommendation is to approve her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So move. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have one more. Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, I would like to inform you of my intention to resign from my position at District 186 effective May 15. I appreciate the opportunities you gave me over the last almost 11 years. Thank you, Kyle Tuttle.
The administration wishes Mr. Tuttle well in his new job with the city, and we recommend that the board approves his resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So move. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. You have more?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Next item is fishbowl items. Do we have fishbowl items?
We do not.
Next is the Freedom of Information Act.
There were none. Knock on wood.
Right. Next item is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. First, do we have any public concerns? Mr. Grody?
Not that I know of. No public.
Do we have any? Do we have any employee concerns?
I do have a letter from Ms. Ashley Rungy that I would like to read. I've sent it out to the Board already, but just for transparency, I'd like to just read what she would say, because if we were in the open, we weren't doing this via Zoom, she'd be reading it herself. So here it is. "Murphysboro School Board Members, I'm writing this letter on behalf of myself and my fellow kindergarten teachers as we have concerns with the continuously growing number of incoming kindergarten students. As I'm sure you are aware, the evidence-based funding model suggests the ratio of 15 to 1 for kindergarten through third-grade students. For the 1920s school year, we had 21 to 22 students per classroom. Last year, our May screening totals of incoming kindergarten students was 116, growing to 145 by August. As of May 1st, 2020, the district has sent out 126. That's 46 call-in, 40 head start, and 40 pre-K 2021 registration packets to families. Over the past three years, our growth between May and August has been roughly 30 kindergarten students." She included some data for everyone. Bringing our numbers to 156, this puts us at 22, 23 students in the classroom. We fear this number will actually be more likely 25 or more students per class. Given the current situation, we fear many parents are not thinking about next year and simply just trying to get through this, resulting in a larger growth in August. We've been discussing the concern with Ms. Finkie, and she reached out to Mr. Grody to express her concern, her growing concern as well. She's very supportive of our need for lower class sizes in kindergarten based on the data and information presented to us by the pre-K teachers. In February, we met with pre-K teachers to discuss vertical alignment. During this meeting, the teachers discussed major discipline issues and lack of readiness. The discipline issues included throwing trays of food on the floor, fits, complete non-compliance. When discussing kindergarten skills and readiness, they explained that multiple students are not potty-trained. They were spending a large part of their day with toileting issues, taking away from learning. These same students will now have been out of school for five months, if not longer, when entering the kindergarten. We feel it is crucial that we lower our kindergarten class sizes. We're asking you to please add another section of kindergarten, knowing the developmental delays we will be seeing and lack of routine many of these children will have that they've been living in. We feel it's vital to have lower numbers in order to help our students learn and succeed. We understand with the state of the economy, finances are a major and understandable concern. We, however, also know these students deserve the best education we can possibly give them, and that is a very difficult task with 25 students per classroom. Thank you for your consideration. Ashley Rungy."
Okay. Was that it?
That was it.
Okay. We'll now move into old business. The first item under old business is a financial update. Mr. Grody, this is informational?
This is informational. The CARES Act, that's the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Grant, opened the eye today, or opened yesterday. We were awarded $846,556. That'll cover costs to deal with the COVID-19 this year and for next year. It covers the cost from March 2020, and it'll go through August 2021. So that's 18 months. We'll be writing the grant, and amendments will most likely occur depending on next school year. I'd also like to say evidence-based funding. There's concerns of reduced payments due to COVID-19's effect on the economy. Legislation has a special session starting tomorrow. We'll be watching what they do with the budget very, very closely. Those are the two key things that are currently taking place. The emergency relief money is good news. The reductions in the budget, we're just hoping that it's not as bad as what we got from the CARES money. Questions, concerns, comments?
For the CARES, what are other, what are your restrictions? What can it be spent on?
It is to, they stress that we build our infrastructure for remote learning. They'd like to see us do that, but it's also then for any salaries, supply materials, anything that you can tie back to the COVID-19 homebound, so.
What about like PPE and things like that for the classroom?
Yeah, PPE was a specific question, and that could be, that could be included. And that's probably something that we will add in there, as well as there's new sprayers for custodians to be able to spray down a classroom at the end of the week to, with a disinfectant that dries itself. We're looking at a lot of various things to try and keep the germs and the cleanliness of the buildings top priority.
What additional money, if any, have we already spent?
Right now, we've bought cleaning supplies. We have bought hand sanitizers. We have paid for salaries for people to cover the lunches, the meal programs.
But that's not additional, right? I mean, they would have been getting paid anyway, right?
Um. There are, those costs can be included. Salaries can be included in those, in those, in those, those grant dollars.
Right, but those aren't additional salaries. Correct.
That's my question too. Those people were already being paid, or they hired additional people?
What we did was we paid everybody their salary. Hourly employees that came into work, we paid them in addition to that. So that can be included in the CARES money. We can also, we've also bought, forgot what I listed now. We've purchased hand sanitizers, cleaning equipment, some of the salaries.
I just want to make sure I.
Dr. Door?
I just want to make sure I understand. So we were, yeah, we're paying all of our hourly employees and, right?
Yes.
But then you said people that worked got paid additional money?
Yes.
I'm confused by that.
Okay, well, everybody got paid.
Getting paid no matter what.
Or staying home. Yeah.
Work.
If somebody got called into work, above and beyond what was, you know, if a secretary got called into work and another secretary was staying home, they both earned that day's pay, but the one that came into work earned more hours. So we paid them additional. And that's gonna, that's included until the end of this week, and then once school's over, there won't be any additional hours, because nobody works. Or nobody was getting paid for staying home in the beginning.
So that was everybody, or that just applied to lunch delivery and secretaries?
Custodians, or anybody that came in to do various things, if they were an hourly employee.
Okay, so it was just hourly employees?
Yes.
Salaried employees did not get paid additional?
No. And that's because in my mind, the salary employees get paid for the task at hand, and they, they do those, and then the hourly employees get paid for.
But we, they could have been. Or so.
You're going in and out on me, Kara. I'm sorry.
I can't hear anything.
Yeah, I can't hear her either.
But we could have, I mean, they were getting paid. I don't see why we were, why we're paying them more. I don't know that any other public entity is doing that. Here, let me.
I know of other public entities that, that entities that are doing it. Some of them are paying them half-time. We were paying them straight-time, which was a little bit more generous, I guess, but I, I do know of other places that were paying at least half-time, so.
The university's not doing that. The university's just paying everybody, and then if you're working, you're working, and if you're not, you're not.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, next, next item under old business is the approval of the press policy updates, number 103.
Yeah, and these are mostly updates for legal changes. A lot of verbiage changes. There's three key questions. Two of them refer to baggage, board member baggage and general personnel baggage. Should we reimburse? Currently, if we send somebody, and it doesn't happen very often, but if they do have to get on a plane and there is baggage that's necessary, we do pay for the checked baggage. And then the third one that has a question is voting. And we do, we should allow students to be released for casting their vote in the election, so those three questions on the press policy, I'd like to recommend that we indicate yes on those, and then we pass them as presented.
Okay, 790, so they can be released up to two hours? Starting the beginning of the 15th day before a primary, a general, or a special election? Is that right? Is that what we're agreeing to?
Yeah, but the administration gets the, gets to be able to put limits on that.
Okay, how? I didn't see that in the update.
I will have to pull that up and. Drafts. 790. Not what I wanted, I want. They're voting. It reads, "The superintendent or designated shall specify the hours during which students who are entitled to vote at a primary, general, or special election of any election, or any election at which propositions are submitted to a popular vote in Illinois may be absent from school for a period of two hours to vote. Students are entitled to be absent from school to vote beginning the 15th day before the primary, general, or special elections, or any election in which propositions are submitted to a popular vote in Illinois or on the day of such elections." So we get to specify the hours during which students who are entitled to vote at a primary, general, or whatever.
So you can limit the time, but it can be with any time within those 15 days?
I don't know if you can limit the time, but you can restrict them to reasonable, you know, if they're going across the street, they should be there and back, and they can't just take a day off on a day that's not voting. You know, you can have some controls for that, so.
And then I had a question about 6280. So it was about grading and promotion, and it said performance can be based on standardized tests? Curriculum attendance standardized tests included all that.
Yeah.
Is that the current practice that we have?
No.
There's promotion, okay.
It could be, but that's not the practice that we have. The standardized tests do not factors into promotion. I mean, you look at all the little characteristics that you can, but if somebody doesn't do well on the standardized test or doesn't take the standardized test, it's not going to count against them. I guess that they don't do well, it counts against them, but it's, you know, there's a lot of other factors you've got to take into play.
That's all from me.
Any other questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the press policy updates, number 103.
I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is the transportation contract extension with West Bus Service.
After last board meeting, Jan did get ahold of Shawna. They are going at this point to make those changes. I'll let Jan address that if anybody's got questions, but administration recommends that we just approve the extension for the year as presented.
Okay, I think administration had asked for any questions after they sent this out to us, I believe over a week ago, so I'm assuming that any questions that the Board might have had, had been answered. So I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the contract extension.
I asked a question about the cameras, but I don't know if any, if everybody else got that information. I got it returned to me about how they're going to check the cameras. Maybe Jan should go over that.
I didn't, I didn't, yeah, because I didn't get that.
Yeah, I talked to Shawna today, and they do a pre-trip review of the bus each day before they go out, and part of that pre-trip is checking the cameras and also checking their radios in addition to the other things that they do. But, but that just shows if the lights are working on the camera, you know, it looks like it's recording, the recording light. They're also going to twice a month pull the hard drives on all the cameras, because sometimes there's a glitch. It, it shows it's recording, but when you pull the cameras, you know, if there's a problem, it's with the hard drive. So they're going to do that. It's 30 buses, so it takes a lot of time to pull those hard drives, so. West Bus is going to pull those hard drives twice a month and check, you know, footage to make sure that they're getting good recordings. If they're not getting good recordings on a camera, they're going to send them in for repair. Remember, or try to repair. Remember, these are the cameras that are five years old that are not supported any longer by the manufacturer. So if they find that the hard drive is not good, then they're going to replace the system, and we agreed because of the cost of that, that they would replace up to three of those systems. And then if there are additional systems that they find that go down, then we're going to go back into, you know, come back to the table and talk about that. And there's no reason that we think that, that will happen, but you know, with these older systems, we had to kind of come to some kind of agreement, how we're going to address those issues with this five-year-old system.
Jan, you had said that if they find three that are not repairable, that we'll renegotiate about that. Is that in the contract, or is that just a verbal agreement?
It's not. We talked about, you know, what amount would be, would be fair, because by the time you install the systems, they're looking at, you know, $1,800 to $2,000 per system on each bus. So, you know, after, you know, they would, they would do up to three, and hopefully they won't have those, because, you know, they have been able to have some repaired in, in the past, but they, they can't buy new hard drives for the, for the cameras, and that's the issue. If they could, they'd just go replace the hard drive. So they're going to try to make repairs, say, you know, send those in, and if that won't work, they're willing to replace those systems. And, you know, and if there, if there ends up being, you know, five, we'll come back to the table and, and talk about of those systems at that time.
I have a question. If we are remote learning in the fall, what are, what is there anything in this contract that says we are not going to have to, as we, you know, pay, pay it, or we pay a reduced amount? I mean, we'll be paying for bus services that we aren't using.
Right, there is, there's not specifically something in the contract for that. That is something that we would have to sit down and renegotiate. At this point, we're receiving funds from the state to cover that. I'm not sure, you know, what's going to happen in the fall, if that's going to be the case, if we're going to be able to turn in all those costs on our transportation claim. I mean, I think we're all kind of flying by the seat of our pants with that, you know, with the assumption that we're going to be back in school, and we have to have a contract in place. But it will be like, you know, everything else right now. Are we going to pay our employees like we have this year? Are we going to pay our transportation contracts with the bus drivers get paid, so they're still there when we do come back to school? So, no, we don't have a specific clause in that for, for the, the virus, for the COVID-19. We started, we started this negotiations before it was an issue, you know, back in January, February.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation from administration for the contract extension. So move. And a second?
So move, Troy. Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number four is the approval of the School Resource Officer Contract, which is enclosure number one. The administration recommends that we approve the contract and engage with the city for a resource officer. Questions from the board?
Again, I don't know if anybody else got the answers to my questions. I asked several questions about that, about if budget problems arise due to COVID. I don't know if you want to go over those answers to those questions, Mr. Grody, or if nobody else had.
At the end of the year, we can terminate, and so you know, you just have to make sure that you have the 90 days notice at the end of the year, but it's a year-to-year contract, and so you pay for the full year if we, if we engage them. And so that was the termination. Your other question was about the training and whose time it would be on, and I, and the answer to that is I don't know when they're going to schedule the training.
So, oh, it's just that one training then? I thought there could be, I thought it sounded like any training that they had.
One training that a school, a police officer needs to go through for the to be the School Resource Officer, and they're supposed to have that. We're going to allow them to wait until January to do that, but we're waiting for the state to schedule it. So I mean, they might do it over Christmas break. They might do it over, you know, over a weekend. I don't know.
That's one thing you don't know, because even the police academies are closed now, so we're at the whim.
So we're at the whim. But when they open those back up for any training they're going to have at all.
Yeah.
I, I took that, I mean, any training that they had, like if they had, you know, Murphy's Girl had a training, it was during the day, that'd be out of our time. Like, not just that one training.
School resource training that they need to be a school resource officer above and beyond their police work, police training.
And what was the answer to the COVID question? If we're still remote learning, what's, what's the recourse then?
Much like the busing contract, we don't have a recourse. We're engaged with them and we would continue as we go. But the school resource officer would be on hand to help us with home visits and things of that nature. But.
Would be. Never mind.
Be a salaried position.
Anyone else? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept and approve the recommendation from administration to hire the school resource officer.
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving to new business, item number one is to set the 2020, 2021 board meeting dates, which is enclosure number two.
And we've been meeting on the third Tuesdays at 6:30. Admin recommends we continue this practice with the note that September, with the budget needing to be on the books for 30 days, it ends up being the fourth Tuesday. And so you've got the enclosures. That's a recommendation the administration gives.
Did you check the dates with the parent teacher conferences and all other events in the district? And the March one appears to be during the week of spring break.
Did not. But what we can do is we can approve it as it is now and then look at that and then make the change plenty of time before March. I don't think they're an issue. That one we, we review.
You did check that one? Okay.
Yeah, because that's always a discussion because we've, we've made that error before. And so in the calendar, maybe we go over that.
Okay. What about other events in the, what about other events in the district? I know there's been times when they've been on, on just other major district school events.
The, the major school events get scheduled later and we try and stay off of board meeting nights. And sometimes there's just unfortunate circumstances that there's just no other good night that can, it can happen. And I've missed a few of my boys' concerts because of that. So I know what you mean. But we try and stay off of those. And sometimes it's just unavoidable with all the other events going on at the schools.
The September meetings not on the third Tuesday because of needing 30 days between August and September. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Evers, did anybody check with you to see if this third Tuesday jived with your schedule as well?
You got to mute yourself.
And I had to, last year, it looked like in October, my son has, oh, I'm still muted.
No, I got it.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
Sorry, goodness. It looks like when I, when I scanned through my, or I did a fine and for concerts, it looked like in October, I may, October and December, sometimes my son has concerts that, well, no, I'm sorry, the October was the last October and then maybe December, but it'll be okay. I mean, I, hopefully I won't have to miss a senior concert of my sons, but it typically does not. It looks like in, in this, like the seven, eight years that I've had this Google Calendar, it looks like there were two that were on the, the third, so third Tuesday. So we should be good. I, I think life will be fine.
Anyone else?
But thank you.
Is everybody still okay with the 6:30? I ask this every time. If anybody wants to move it up or we want to stay at 6:30.
If we started earlier, we'd just go later. So.
I can't start earlier than 6:30.
There you go.
All right.
There it is.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the board meeting dates for 2020 and 2021.
So moved. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is the approval of the resolution to alter the graduation requirements for the class of 2020.
Yeah. And this is due to COVID-19. Administration recommends that we reduce the graduation requirements for the 2019, 2020 senior class, senior class only, in line with the Illinois Governor's Executive Order 2020-31 and ISBE's Emergency Amendment for Title 23 dated April 27, 2020. So this requirement would just be changed for the senior class. I believe it does affect one of our students, one only. And he, and he deserves to graduate as our, as the administration's beliefs on that. And this, everybody else, the freshmen, sophomores and juniors are all getting passes or incomplete and will make it up. So there's no need to reduce it in the future years unless, of course, dealing with this again for an extended period next year. And then you'll have to look at your senior class again.
Light your tongue. Okay, any questions? Then I will enter. I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the altering of the graduation requirements for this class and we hope this class only. I'm sorry, did we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number, and first, and before we go to the next item, I want to thank Annette and Mr. Brown, the administration and all the people that were on the committee to the plans for the graduation on Saturday night. I know the logistics of it were huge, but just speaking for myself and, and I guess the rest of the board and everybody involved, thank you very much. I think this will be a very unique graduation. And, you know, y'all did the best you could with what we had to work with. And, and I certainly appreciate your efforts and, and time in that. So.
Unique is what we were going for. Right, Troy?
That's right.
Well, we, we've got it. All right. Item number three is the approval of the tuition free students for 2020, 2021.
The districts got an approved waiver with the state to allow students of employees to attend the district as a tuition-free basis. Administration recommends that the board approves the four students as presented to be tuition-free students, all employees.
Just a quick question, Mr. Grody. When did we start doing this? It hasn't been that long ago. And I think it's been a great program that we've done. But how long have we been doing this now?
I don't know. I mean, it might have been my, my, my fourth or fifth year. So I'm thinking nine, nine years we've been doing it.
I didn't think it was quite that long, but regardless. Any other questions from the board?
So are these students that are moving in to our dis, or moving into our schools? Are there existing students that?
No, I believe that they are existing students because we approved this last year. And so they would have been coming here. I, yeah, the.
I guess I just forgot from last year.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to approve the tuition-free students for 2020, 2021.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is the approval to waive lab fees.
Last month, we approved waiving registration fees. Lab, lab fees were not included. Administration recommends that we approve these fees as well. And that did ask some questions regarding this. There will be no reduction in, in in the educational environment. We're not going to be cutting back on materials or anything due to the lack of the fees. We're going to be moving some of the, the things that the fees normally cover into some of the CTE grants, some of their certification testing. You couldn't write into the grants before. Now they're allowing you to write them into the CTE grants. We're going to shuffle some things around there. The recommendation is just that we, as we did with the registration fees, we do that with the lab fees.
Care money, you won't need care money for that though, right? Because you've already determined where you're going to find the money for those.
Right. I don't, I don't see us offsetting that with the cares money.
Okay. I have one quick question too. So the, we approved the waiving of the registration fees, but the registration packets went out after we approved that. And the registration packets all still had all of the fee stuff. So are you just returning that money to people that send in registration fees? Because nothing's really gone out to parents, letting them know that they don't need, have to pay those.
I don't, I don't recall seeing anything on mine asking for fees, but.
Yeah, we waited until after the board meeting to send out the registration packet. So I'll check with Steve Carrington to see if.
All, all three of mine, Will's didn't have it, but one of them had a $60 registration fee and one of them had a $50 registration fee listed.
So the high school, yeah, I only saw the high schools. It was right.
Okay. I'll look into that. We'll get communication out if that's the case. And we will, we will not be taking people's money that, for registration fees.
Any other questions? And I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to waive the lab fees.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number five is the Egyptian Area Schools Employee Benefit Trust Health Insurance Renewal, which was enclosure number three.
Administration recommends, after consulting with the MEA Insurance Committee, that the board approves the continuation with the Egyptian Area Schools Employee Benefit Trust for the 2021 plan year. That's a 10% increase, and that is a large increase. It is less than what our loss ratio was. But the recommendation right now is to continue with the employees' benefit trust.
Questions from the board? All right. Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the Employee Benefit Trust Health Insurance Renewal.
So moved.
Second?
Again.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carried. We have a need to go into closed session.
And make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5, Illinois compiled statutes 120/2C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body to determine its validity.
In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carried.